Good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Haft, you're welcome to go ahead and start your briefing to give the commissioners and Charles County the update on the coronavirus COVID-19.
Great, thank you very much. This is Dr. Howard Haft, Executive Director of the Maryland Department of Health, and I've been assigned to provide resources on COVID-19 for Charles County. And my report for today is that there are 123 patients in the nursing facilities and assisted living who are positive, including the group homes in Charles County. 120 of those are in nursing facilities and assisted living. There have been nine total patients in the hospital currently, and there have been today 28 deaths among these patients. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about this very overwhelming pandemic that's sweeping across the globe and across our country, across our state, and in our county.
Dr. Haft, good morning. This is Commissioner Stewart. I just have a question about your statistics that you just shared. You said that it was 120 residents in nursing homes and assisted livings that currently have tested positive, and that we've had 28 deaths, so that's the 120 plus the 28?
No, that includes, the 28 are included in the 120.
So, would it be true to say that currently, right now, in nursing homes and assisted living facilities, the number of patients that have tested positive are 92?
Yes, I think that's a fair estimate. But let me, this is Howard Haft again, let me say that one of the things that we've taken note of here in Charles County and in other counties around the state is that the way that we had previously responded with collecting data for outbreaks of various kinds in skilled nursing facilities and other outbreaks is not really the best way to collect data for this particular outbreak, both because of the scale of this outbreak and because of some of the nuances in terms of testing and some of the future nuances that will, as we mature our testing capabilities, and include antibodies and other things. So, we're on a very fast track, and I mean fast track within the next several days, to produce a new statewide reporting system that I will be able to provide much more detailed reporting at the next interval. And this reporting system will be across all facilities across the state, so it'll give more normalized and standardized data. And it's intended, besides to report situational awareness, also to be able to help the state and the counties to be able to predict where areas of need are, areas of need in terms of testing, in terms of staffing, in terms of personal protective equipment, or other areas of need, so that we can be more proactive rather than reactive in this pandemic. So, I think right now that the inference is, as you had indicated, can we reasonably say if we subtract 28 from the 120 that we'll get the total number? I think that's, that's, that's good math, but it doesn't tell the full story. I think the full story that we need to tell is more universal testing in all of our facilities so we know who both has this acutely, who has recovered, and we'll discover that from antibody testing, both for patients and for staff. And as I'm sure you can understand, understanding who has been asymptomatic and recovered from this is a very critical, important thing to know as we move from the acute phase of this pandemic to moving back to what we might consider somewhat normal again. So, that's a long answer for a short question, I apologize.
No, thank you so much. And right now, I think this may be my last question, who knows, but for the statistics that you provided, how many facilities does that cover? How many actual facilities do we have positive cases at, in Charles County?
Seven facilities.
Seven, thank you.
Dr. Haft, I actually have a question for you. Are you there, sir?
Yes, sir.
So, I know the governor announced that he had acquired a lot more testing from overseas, test kits. I know that one of the struggles we had early on was getting some sufficient test kits for the entire county. What do we anticipate will be the amount of kits that come to Charles County, and specifically, maybe we can get into these hotspots like our nursing homes?
So, I can't give you an exact number. 500,000 was the number that was taken off of the airplane yesterday, and that is obviously an enormous increase in terms of the capacity. There are several steps, I think, as the governor pointed out, in addition to having the kits, there's also the testing materials and transport media and other things that need to be coordinated with that. But I think those are all on the very fast track. And I can tell you that among the highest priorities for testing are skilled nursing facilities. We have 24,000 individuals, maybe 23,900 individuals in skilled nursing facilities across the state. And as they're reporting out as of this morning, almost half of the deaths, I believe we have 603 deaths in the state to date, and almost half of those deaths came from people who were residents in skilled nursing facilities. So, obviously, this is a very critical area to do testing, both testing of patients, residents, they are not patients, residents, and also staff. So, that will be, I think, at the top of the list in terms of allocation, so you will see that change very quickly. The steps that need to be, that need to occur also are the, to get those test kits to labs so that they can, they can employ them in their labs, and to get the testing materials that connect, that collect the swabs out to places like skilled nursing facilities and local health departments. But those things are absolutely on the fast track. The governor's made this the highest priority, so anybody who works for him or around him understands that this is something that has to happen, and it happened quickly.
And they understand, because you're pretty much our liaison to the state, they understand the specific need down here in Charles and the critical need down here?
They do, they do, so you have a, you have a direct conduit, whether you like it or not, to the department. So, and I'm happy to do that. You know, I've been a Charles County resident for more than 40 years, my wife's a lifelong resident, we've raised six children in this great county, and it's been my great pleasure to practice and volunteer in a whole variety of things, and you can be sure that your interests are my interests also.
Thanks for joining the team, thank you.
Dr. Haft, Commissioner Ritchie, how you doing?
Very good, sir.
Question, is there any way that maybe the county can supply some iPads or something that says family can see their loved ones, or would a nursing have access to where they could have people see their families, or open some windows where people are available to walk through a window? I heard a lot of places like the windows are closed down, they won't let nobody come up to the driveway, and I'm just wondering, is there any way we can have some people see their loved ones that we can help with or do anything about?
Commissioner Ritchie, I think that's an excellent idea. I will, I will speak to, have a weekly meeting with all of the skilled nursing facility leadership in the, in the health department, and I will put that on the agenda.
And if they need equipment, maybe our county, we could probably, we could probably round some equipment up here for them to get to the nursing homes in our area, you know?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great point, you know, because one of the things that I believe makes, makes this situation all the more painful for everyone is when, when your loved ones, your family members or others are in the hospital or in the skilled nursing facilities, that they're prohibited from visiting, and that just is so painful. I fully understand that, and I think that's a great idea to diminish that.
And I think if you're feeling bad, you see your family, might give you some encouragement to keep fighting and, give you some oomph to see your family and help you out in this situation, you know?
Yeah, and I, yes, absolutely, I think it's a great idea, and I will make every effort to advance that for you, and I think we'll see if we have any resources also from the state and, or other ways to do that. You know, it's pretty easy these days, actually, to do that on a, even on a telephone with, you know, the technology that's available. But I wanted to also make, mention one other thing while I, while I have you on the line here, is that I think we've missed the point in one way, both as a society and also in our, you know, in our press, in our, in our social media, and the one point is that the, the people who serve, healthcare workers and others that serve in these skilled nursing facilities and assisted living facilities and group homes are in many ways and very much in the front line of this battle against coronavirus. And, you know, as I just said, that, you know, nearly half the deaths occur in the people who are cared for in those facilities. It's not because they don't get good care, it's because they are the vulnerable people and the ones when the virus attacks, it's most likely to attack them in a, in a serious way. That's, the distribution in terms of death is dramatically slanted toward the elderly and the sick. But these folks have been, many of them have been serving there for decades in a selfless way, and, and they don't get the same kind of gratitude that we give to others in the healthcare worker community. And I think we do owe them a debt of gratitude for what they've done for many years in the past and what they continue to do against sometimes great odds. And they're not always the highest compensated or the most notably rewarded in the, you know, in the press or other places, but these people do, they do a great job, and they do jobs that other people just simply don't want to do in many cases. So, I want to give them a shout out and thank them for what they do every day.
Absolutely.
Dr. Haft, thank you for that. We do really appreciate all of our folks that are on the front line, keeping, keeping us safe and then tending to the ones who are ill. I have another question regarding the statistical data that the state of Maryland places on the website coronavirus.md.gov. With the changes, and I heard from the federal level on Sunday, they discussed the President's Trump executive order, making sure it's mandatory across the country that nursing home and assisted living data is going to be released. And with your statement that you made earlier about the state of Maryland will begin to collect the data to ensure that we have a true understanding of what's occurring in our, in our nursing homes and assisted living. So, if that's going to be happening over the week, my question is, will the public, which I'm hearing a lot from about their concerns about the numbers, will the public will be, be able to view this additional information on the state's website?
Yeah, we will follow the guidance that's provided by CDC on this, and it's not 100% clear yet how that's going to, at what level the guidance will direct us to release information, whether it's countywide, whether it's facilitywide, and what the normalization of that data is. So, so, by normalization, I mean that we want to make sure that we can compare apples to apples when we look at facilities, so that we're not looking at single numbers, but more case rates and those kinds of things that tell a more clear story about the incidence of a particular condition or the prevalence of a condition rather than the numbers, because obviously, something like, and this is stylistic, but two cases in a place that has five residents is much more significant than two cases in a place that has 100 residents.
Of course.
So, we'd just like to, you know, make sure that we're, when we report, that we're reporting something that makes sense to everybody. But, but you can be sure, yeah, whatever, whatever we're required to report, whatever the public is, is permitted to see, we'll make sure that that, there's no, there's no intent to hide anything from, from anyone, just only to make sure that it's, that it's, it does two things, one, it gives a correct story and correct information, and two, that to the extent that we're required to, that we protect individual privacy and confidentiality. So, those are the two guiding principles.
Right. So, I think, I think one of the words that you said was, is spot on, is intent, and you stated it's not the intent to hide data. One of the things that I'm hearing from residents is that some people feel that the state of Maryland, or in particular, Charles County, is trying to hide the number of cases at the nursing home. And I continue to have conversations with people to ensure them that's not the case. I did receive a copy of the letter that was issued regarding the standard that the state of Maryland is following regarding disseminating statistical data regarding the coronavirus, but then I was a little confused because for the past few weeks, I thought that the nursing homes in Charles County was not disseminating information based on the Maryland State Department of Health requirements. But then, over the last few days, I did see a report, a news report, that Montgomery County was releasing the statistical data with deaths and ages from the nursing homes in their county. So, I'm trying to understand, well, what's the difference? If Montgomery County is releasing the information, why aren't we releasing the information in Charles County, since we're governed under, of course, we're in the same state?
Right. Well, we're, as I said, we're in the process of standardizing and normalizing that. It's been, every county has been actually doing this in a different way, so we don't have any, you know, good way to compare from county to county, and the data sometimes is, is not, is incomplete, and that it's been done on a more voluntary than a standardized and mandatory way. So, I, you know, I think the only way that I can answer that is that we're going to get this, we're going to report it, and we're going to report it correctly so that it makes sense to everyone. Individual counties, you know, have been reporting, and some have reported, some haven't, but there's not been any way that we can, we can get at this time, good comparison from place to place. But more than that, I think the reason that we want to capture data is not, is, is one, certainly to make sure that individuals who need to have this information get this information, but also so that we can use it in an analytic way to be proactive in being able to, during an epidemic like this, to be able to be proactive and intervene where we need to in advance of there being a more significant outbreak. But also want to point out that even one of the most telling things about, about this data is that, and something that may not be always obvious to people, is that when there's one case in a facility, the proper thing to do is to test everyone, staff and, and residents, and that will turn up inevitably large numbers of cases. Many of those are asymptomatic, and they're people that we know if we test, if we went around Charles County and tested everybody, we'd discover a lot of people who have this condition or asymptomatic. It's important to do that in those facilities, because we want to separate those who are positive from those who are negative, because even the asymptomatic individuals can transmit the condition. But it doesn't mean the same, it doesn't have, it doesn't have the same meaning as that if there are 120 people who tested positive, that there, it does not mean in any way, shape, or form that there are 120 people who are sick. Now, I would say in a skilled nursing facility, the risks of them becoming sick is much higher than it would be in the general public, but it still doesn't mean that they, that those 120 people will get sick or need to go to the hospital or wind up on a ventilator or anything. It just simply means that they were, in a comprehensive way, they were tested. Other facilities might not test everyone, and they would give a different story. So, that's why normalizing this data is really important before we, before we give it out in a way that doesn't, doesn't really make sense to tell the, the correct story to the, to those who need to know, whether that's public health, or whether it's county commissioners, or whether that's the Department of Health, or whether it's the general public. So, it's just, it's really important, since it's so sensitive, it's really important to get this right before we do it. And we've taken, admittedly, we've taken at the department level, taken a step back and saying, let's, let's, let's make sure we get this right and do it in a standard way. And I can tell you, this happened very fast, and we're going to be doing this within the next several days and putting it out to all the skilled nursing facilities.
Well, I, thank you. I agree with you that it's important to normalize, normalize the data, but wouldn't you also agree that in order to have a better understanding of what's going on, we need to normalize the, the standard in testing? Because if one, we need a policy, in my opinion, that states that if a nursing home or assisted living facility has one case, right, and this goes back to what Commissioner Bowling was stating about the importance of testing, if one person is affected, then if one nursing home is testing everyone, if that's going to be the standard, there should be a policy that all nursing homes and facilities have to follow that, because that would give, if we don't have a policy from the state, that would, would, and then you have a nursing home and they only test people that are systematic, then that has, that gives us a false sense of hope that there aren't cases in a nursing home. In addition, it's important to get the data out, not just for the medical folks and the researchers, but during this time of uncertainty, information with fact-based information is helping a lot of people stay sane. And one of the things that you mentioned about, just because a nursing home or assisted facility, for example, they have 100 cases, doesn't mean that all 100 cases are sick. I think when you report the data, it's going to be important to make sure that we emphasize that, because out of 100, maybe 80 are asymptomatic. But if you start publishing that 100 people in nursing home A has tested positive, normal people, non-medical people, a lot of them, their minds will go immediately to think that all 80 actually are sick or all 100 are, are sick. So, I think it's going to be very important to make sure that we're sharing the data regarding who's sick and not just asymptomatic, symptomatic, excuse me.
I, I agree with you completely, and from, you know, as I say, from your lips to God's ears, but even better than that, we're, not even better, but equal to that, is that we're actually making those policy decisions right now. And that's, you know, I think you'll see that that will be a significant change, that the Secretary of Health and the governor are very focused on exactly the issues that you're talking about now in terms of testing and reporting and making sure that we comprehensively test and, within the skilled nursing facilities. And as you very well said, there's a big difference between an asymptomatic individual tests positive and someone who is symptomatic and tested positive and is sick. So, you're, you're, again, 100% correct, and I'll be happy to report to you at the next interval how much progress has been made exactly in those things that you've called to, to our attention now.
Thank you so much. Dr. Haft, hi, this is Commissioner Coles, I have a couple of questions for you. One, I appreciate the fact that you talked, that you spoke about proactive. I know that there's an immediate situation, and I wanted to know, you don't have to go through all the details, but what aggressive state, what aggressive process are you putting in place right now to combat what has already happened? And then we can, and then talk about proactive. Do you have, is there a plan? Are you isolating, are you testing, I mean, kind of give folks a feel that you are, things are moving forward in the positive direction, and are we, are there any, do you feel that there may be situations that this may even escalate to get worse? And speaking of data, that's kind of what I'm piggyback on Commissioner Stewart's quest.
Sure, I'm happy to report on that. So, as I became involved in the, in the significant outbreak within the county, I reviewed the process that was taken place there, which was after the initial index patient was determined to be positive, there was testing for all staff and, and all, and all residents cohorting, which means separating those who are positive from those who are negative, including cohorting the staff so that only positive staff take care of, only, only certain staff take care of positive patients and only other staff take care of negative patients, so there's no cross-contamination, this is not positive staff, these are all negative staff that are there. Checking staff's temperatures in and out of the facility and asking questions about symptoms, and doing appropriate infection control modalities in terms of surface cleaning and masks and gloves, et cetera. So, all of those things that were put into place and documented. I had, that was my initial inspection. You know, I'm, I'm a physician, but I don't claim to be an expert in infectious diseases, but we do have within the Department of Health those who are expert in infectious disease containment. And I asked one of our colleagues from the department to come down to do a second and more, what they, as they go through their checklists of things that need to be done at a much more granular level, and they reported back that there was, there was complete compliance there. We'll do the same thing where there's an outbreak in any facility, and those are the, kind of the standard resources that we would apply. In addition, we have access within the state to, to teams of nurses and aides and doctors who have been those from the Health and Human Services who've worked on the cruise ships and other, and other places that provide technical assistance as well as staffing. So, I've had those teams come down also to provide additional technical assistance in terms of, you know, additional ways to do cohorting and things that are very nuanced within that environment. And we'll continue to use them also as adjuncts, both for staffing adjuncts and also as, as technical advisors, and we're using them across the state. We also have teams who have, who when needed can come in and do other things like testing or provide short supplies of personal protective equipment. And these are the National Guard teams, and they particularly have come into places that needed to either move patients out suddenly, because they have a ability to move people out when they, when needed, or when there needs to be very rapid application of testing to, to a facility. Those are the two key things that they've done. We haven't needed to do that in Charles County to, to date, but to your very good question, are we, rephrase it, are we out of the woods yet? And I would say we're not, you know, I think we're, we're at a plateau place in this pandemic where the number of new cases per day has not been increasing. It's, there are significant numbers of new cases every day, but the rate of increase has been relatively stable, has been stable. The number of new patients hospitalized has been stable. The number of deaths per day has been up a little bit recently, but more recently in the last week has been relatively stable. But that stability is all based on the fact that we're doing, I think, maximum mitigation in the community right now. And our focus really needs to be now to apply those same kinds of maximum efforts into our congregate facilities, whether they are skilled nursing facilities, assisted living, homeless shelters, areas where, other areas where vulnerable seniors live together in, in, in close quarters. And I think that's where our, our focus is shifting to now, because before we can get out of the woods with a return to normal, we're going to need to do a lot more of the testing and mitigation in those environments also. So, I hope that's helpful. And I want to paint, want to paint a rosy picture that we will, you know, we're all in this together, working together and supporting each other and, you know, and keeping the faith and sharing the love and between and among us and doing these important acts. We'll get through this, and we'll get through it together, and we'll be better in the end.
Absolutely, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Dr. Haft?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Haft?
Yes.
Oh, could you let us know if there's anything that commissioners can do for any of our nursing homes in Charles County that you can't get right away or anything we can possibly do? Just let us know and call, call the county administrator or anybody, or all of us.
Well, I appreciate that, I'm sure they do also, and, you know, we'll take you up on that offer. I think right now it's I think right now it's, I think there's a lot of work that, that we need to do, as you pointed out, in terms of testing and making sure that we can keep adequate staffing levels up. We, you know, we've made available through the state a number of new staffing resources, and we're, continue to do that. We'll be deploying temporary staffing teams to those places around the state that where, where there's been a, you know, a lack of staffing. And, you know, I fully understand how people who work in, in the skilled nursing facilities, you know, feel very uncomfortable because of these outbreaks. And, and there's certainly no, no lack of understanding how, why or how someone would say, that's not for me right now. And, but at the same token, for those people who, who stay and say, I'm, I'm here to do this, and I know that there's risks to me, to my family, et cetera, my hat goes off to them. But, but more than that, we, we just need to support those folks, and we need to get, realistically, we need to get more people, the volunteers, out there to help them to get through this difficult time. We'll get back to normal again, and everybody will feel as comfortable as possible working in, in skilled nursing facilities and hospitals and other places without, without the same threat. But in the interim, we're going to all have to be reaching deep to meet the needs. And, but I think, I think together we'll do that. And reaching out to the county commissioners and, and the administrators, probably going to be some of the things we'll need to do together also.
Thank you.
So if, I'm happy to answer any other questions. If not, I'm going to get back to work.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Haff.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure. Look forward to speaking to you again next week or anytime you need me. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you're, thank you for what you're doing.